Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Beekman zoning board of appeals meeting for Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to draw your attention to the exits right in front of you, the one right behind you to the left, and the one at the end of the hallway. At this time, I'd like to invite everyone to rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone, for attending the meeting this evening. We have one item on the agenda, and that item is Fay Grito, area variance for 14 Sunrise Drive, grid number 675904769120. And it's zoned town center. The applicant is requesting relief of 73 feet where the front yard is required to be 0 to 15, and the applicant is requesting 88 feet, thereby requesting 73-foot variance. Additionally, the minimum livable floor area is 800 square feet for this zone, and the applicant is requesting 630 feet, thereby requesting relief of 170 square feet. All right. So I'd like to make a motion to open tonight's meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So Ms. Grito, if you would please come up and to the podium and state your name and your case for the board, please.
Hi, my name is Fay Grito. I live at 216, 2618 Route 55, Parkway, New York. I am hoping to construct a home with a two-unit home on 14 Sunrise Drive, which is just behind the house that I currently own on 55. Part of the reason is, unfortunately, my husband has some issues. He's currently in a nursing home, and the house that I have at the moment is not handicap accessible. So I decided to build on this piece of property that the Grito family has owned since 1960, and it was subdivided in 1964. At that time, if you look at the maps, in the front of the house, where the proposed house is, the septic system was designed adjacent to the road, Sunrise Drive, and within, at that time, it was acceptable to be in that location. But since then, federal regulations have changed. There's a stream. It's designated federal wetlands. So I had to hire an engineer to move the septic away from that location to the side of the building. The well is on the other side, and my son's well is next to that, so the septic couldn't go over there. And the house, if it were built 15 feet from the road, would be infringing upon an environmentally sensitive area. So that's the reason. Things change, and even though we've owned this for a long time, we had to adapt to the different regulations that are currently in place. And I'll turn it over to, and I'm in hopes to build soon.
Good evening. My name is Norm Yonza. I'm the architectural manager at Westchester Modular Construction, and we're here tonight, as Mrs. Grito said, is to hopefully usher these variances through.
Is it not?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is it not? Is that better? Anyway, we're here tonight to help usher through, hopefully usher through these variances for Mrs. Grito so that she can build soon. As she explained, the setback variances, 0 to 15 feet for that town center zoning because of the way, the placement of the septic system and such, that is why the house is where it's at. And that's what we're, as a hardship variances, we'd like to, you know, have that accepted because of those issues. We can't move that house 15 feet up against the street level. Plus, I believe it matches the feeling of the neighborhood with the other house beside it. So, and the same reasoning and the variance for the size of the unit, the B unit, due to the size of keeping the house within a certain square footage, we, our 800 square feet is now less. And due to the size of the lot and where everything lands, it's just, it was just the right size for this house and for the neighborhood. So.
Also, I wanted to have the apartment for one person, or not the apartment, the second unit, one person, because it's probably going to be a caretaker, and rather than have like three bedrooms or something, one person will have a minimal impact on the neighborhood, and I'll be living there also. So, did we catch everything?
Yeah, I mean, if there's any questions that I can answer, I mean, Fay seems to have a good understanding of what she needs and such, but if there's any questions we can answer as the company that will be building the house that sits on the foundation, we're here to help you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. So Ms. Grito, would you approach, please? So could you take us through the five points in your application?
Sure.
Please.
Will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood? I say no. The proposed house is in keeping with the neighborhood and would fit very nicely. I don't want to say this, but I could have built a three-story multi-unit on this lot. I've chosen not to do that. Can the desired result be achieved by some other means? Not really because of the restrictions of the federal wetlands. The stream would not allow me to put the house 15 feet from the road. The, my son's, well, it will be his soon, my son's well is on the backside of the log home, and my well will be near his, so the septic has to be on the other side. It can't be in the front of the house because of, again, the restrictions. And that's being environmentally sensitive. Is the variance substantial? I don't think so, given the circumstances. Each lot is different, and it's nice to say, well, we're going to make it everything like this. That's not how it works. Dollar General was not up against the street because of the configuration of the land and where the septic and the drainage needed to be. They got a variance to have their building back. This building will be pretty much in line. If you pull in off 55, you'll see the log home, and then you'll see my building. They'll be pretty close in proximity from the road. So it's not like my building is here and this building is there. It's kind of consistent. Will the variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment? No, it actually makes it better because we're not encroaching upon sensitive lands. And is this self-created? No. We've owned the land since 1960, subdivided it in 64, so I didn't create the situation. It's the zoning changed and the federal regulations changed. And that's the five elements that you need to look at.
So I did have one question, just to separate the two variances that you're requesting. So if I understand correctly, you're looking to put a 600, what did we say?
630.
630 square foot home on this property.
No, it's 2,600.
It's 2,600.
The apartment is 630.
I understand.
And it's 800, so there's 170 square feet variance.
I understand.
Which is less than 20% of the total apartment size. And again, it's a one-bedroom. I'm not trying to squeeze 16 people in this little house.
So do I have a pen? Because when I looked at it, I'm like, that's a lot more than, bigger than 600 square feet.
That's why I was confused.
No, no, no. The house is altogether, it's 2,600 and change.
Yeah. What's the point of...
But there will be an apartment that will be 600...
And 30 square feet.
And 30 square feet. I understand.
But it's attached.
Yes, oh, yes. It's all one unit. Well, it's two separate units, but all on the same foundation.
If anybody ever wanted to buy it in the future, they could always knock down and make it a...
Yeah, I suppose.
I mean, if they wanted to.
I mean, it's going to have a kitchen, it's going to have a bathroom, it's going to have, you know, all the things that you would need in your apartment.
Well, it's a living room for two people, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Separate entrance.
So then, to that point, would it be possible to make the apartment 800 square feet?
There's a difficulty doing that, and it has to do with the way the modular does their units.
Okay.
It could suddenly become very expensive to add more to their, they bring them over in certain sizes down the road, and it would be difficult because of...
So do you have any information you can share with the board regarding what the difference would be to do an 800-square-foot apartment versus, you don't have any information?
They may, I don't know. I know this project, I was going to do a single, my husband, and suddenly it's a 200,000-plus addition to what I'm doing, so...
It's helpful for the board to weigh the alternatives.
Because both apartments are going to be using the same septic.
Right.
Right, it's not...
So I almost feel like you have to...
But in the future, the apartment could be rented, right?
You're right.
So we...
Well, I'm approved for a three-bedroom, which this is.
Yes.
One bedroom in the unit two, and two bedrooms in unit one. So I meet, you know, I'm not adding any more people.
Sure. I understand, but the one unit will be 630 square feet?
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
Is there an estimate, an idea?
Can we say 75,000,000 more?
Say that again?
75 to 100,000 more.
To add on 200 more square feet?
And it has to do with their, when they transport and they build these, they build them in sections.
It's like a modular.
Huh?
It's almost like a modular.
Yeah, it is, it is. And they build them in sections, so now suddenly you've got this...
Now you've got to add on.
... wide thing they got to bring.
Did you see? I'm trying to see if the actual... So I guess this is, this is the main... Right? Because look how big it is.
What size septic are you putting in anyways?
It's pretty much a three-bedroom standard.
1,200 or 1,400? What are you doing?
Huh? It's all, it's all board health approved.
This is, you know, you see this, a few of the separate units.
I'm just wondering, because if you've got two people...
This is the one unit here, unit two, and this is unit one.
Well, you're going to treat it as if it's a three-bedroom.
It is.
So it would be like almost 1,000 square foot tank.
Yeah, I don't have the... And it's all board health approved.
I do have a question, and... I do have a question, but before I do ask the question, I would like to welcome everyone, as Archer and Mann just did. And I would like to say that I have known Fay for the last 20 to 25 years. We are not social friends. We were, and we shared an adventure a couple of months ago together that we worked very hard on. That said, as with any other applicant, I can already see that I can refer back to decisions that were made in the past to guide me through this, if, in case anyone in particular would have any issue or any questions. And please feel free to ask.
And we have no...
It's always best to ask ahead of time rather than to try to hear it in the background when it may or may not really be a valid point.
And we have had a relationship that we're not on the phone with each other, if we're seeing each other a couple of times a year, that would be a lot. And I have no financial relationship with Stella, nor does she with I.
So, but I do have a couple of questions. So I think this may have been touched on. Basically, the character...
Stella, Stella, are you speaking to the man?
Yeah, yeah. Do we have the rental? Yeah. I'm doing, it's a ranch. It's going to have a composite cedar shake look with white windows and a dark roof, white trim. And it's, again, it's not going to be a two, so it's going to be...
Sounds like you're using Hardy Plank or something.
I'm sorry?
Hardy Plank?
I'm using Certainty, which is a very high, actually, it's very high-end siding. Actually, it's put on piece by piece by piece. It's not like a granite siding. It's like if you took cedar shakes.
Yeah.
I have your picture.
Yeah, I have that.
Would you do a lot of the board, please?
Yeah, yeah, this has to be it, and it's very lady sense.
That's really a good product.
Beautiful. There you go. Come here. And the reason why I'm not doing Rockwell, the manufacturers that we used to represent have a business.
Oh.
So...
Too bad.
Do you want to see what the siding looks like? I have it on camera.
I, I'm familiar with it, so...
I'm not sure that I'm familiar with it.
I'm sorry?
I'm not sure that I'm familiar with it. So if you have it, that would be great.
Really nice product.
Is it?
It lasts for like 50 or more years.
Oh, all right. Good to know.
Very good product.
Yeah, I've got it on the...
All I had to do was paint it. Comes in different colors. They painted it ahead of time.
And it lasts?
It what? It lasts all year.
My last night's dinner.
Because the house you have now is wood.
It is.
It's a log cabin, right? It's a log cabin, and a lot of times woodpeckers go after that wood.
You know, it's one of our pieces of art. He's going to bring it in. I know I have a senior house in the wood, they love it, woodpeckers love it.
Woodpeckers love it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a very good product.
It does look beautiful.
Yeah. Very expensive, but it's worth, but it lasts for like 50 years.
Oh, yeah, I'll be dead there.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. But, okay. And obviously, this is not going to tower over anything else, is it?
No, like I said, if by rights, I could do a three-floor multi-unit, which I don't want to do. And this, quite frankly, my son and my daughter-in-law, my grandson, live in the log home, and for my husband to have them next door, that's why I had property on Beekman Road that I could have built on, but I wanted to be closer to my son.
Well, it gives you peace of mind.
I'm getting older, too. I have the Andrews sisters. No, the Casey sisters, the wife and...
Any other questions from any of the other board members?
Not really.
So I do see on the, I just want to describe, you know, we often have the screen up where we can, everyone can kind of follow along, but what I see here on the first floor plan is what looks like, you know, more or less a square that's divided into a one unit that's kind of an L shape, starting at the lower right-hand corner and going up to the top. And then in the lower left-hand corner, I see unit two, which is a living room, a bedroom, and a little kitchenette, and back. So that's, that's what we're, we're referring to, the unit two, which is, now, on the, on the plan here, it seems to suggest that unit two is 589 square feet. Am I reading that wrong?
That's probably close.
Okay. Well, I'm asking, I asked...
If it was a two-family, we're wrong.
Okay. Oh, so on the application, I just want to make sure we have the right variance. So on the application, it said 630 square feet for unit two, and on the plan, it says 589 square feet. It's probably 589. Okay. 211 square foot variance. Got it.
Well, it's probably small, and I call it big.
Yeah. This is the... That's a very nice siding product.
Mm-hmm.
That also, that's why the increase in the price...
Yeah. Just leave that up here.
Now, at the three of the trees, we have about 120 feet.
Thank you, Valerie.
Are they including the sun?
No, I'm sure not. Because I don't think the sunroom is connected here. This is closed off. The entrance is here.
Okay, but there's a sliding, wait a minute. This sunroom...
I don't know what's here.
This sunroom is part of, is part of this. So that means this is even smaller than what they had originally.
It's a little smaller, so they need a little bit more.
Yeah.
It's wrong. That, that, yeah, we just, we have to, yeah, we did. Yeah, we'll have to fix that, so they need a 211...
So would they have to resubmit an application, or could we just...
It can be.
Okay. Because that's a difference.
So...
I'm deaf, so I don't...
I lost her actual, I don't, it must be, the actual point. Yeah. Oh. Okay. So, all right. Any other questions from the board members?
No, but what's the difference between the 5, the 630 and the 5...
It's 41, so she actually needs 211, not 170.
211.
Okay. So, oh, sorry.
Just a couple of points. Yeah, I actually, go ahead. You want to show me something?
No, what he's saying is, so she, down here, it says, it has 630 square feet, but it's small, so they have to add another 22 feet.
Okay.
Onto that, because it's not, now it's even more, smaller than they originally said.
Okay.
Because that sunroom is not part of this, that sunroom is part of this.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fair.
Anything else from any other board members in terms of any comments at this time before we open up for public comment?
You know what, I can, I can wait, actually, for afterwards.
Okay. All right. All right. So I'd like to invite any members of the public who would like to comment on this application to please step up to the microphone. If you would like to comment, then I would just ask that you first fill out the form in the back where you provide your name and information, and then please step up to the mic and share with us your comment.
Well, we just did 400-something square feet. Yeah. Well...
I'll, I'll touch on that. I have the information.
It's not even me. It's the wetlands. What else is supposed to be?
So do we have anyone who would like to make a comment?
Yes, please. Sign in and then please approach.
If you want to make, I don't remember if you already did earlier, but if you want to make a motion to officially open the public hearing...
Yes, so motion to open the public hearing.
Second. Just for the record, notices were sent out to your neighbors. Okay. In the, okay.
I think Fay knows what she's...
Okay, so please approach if you'd like to make a comment.
Yes. I think that's why it's so crowded.
Please state your name and...
Yep. Hi, I'm Lori DeRosa. I live at 161 Palmer Circle. Just had a question for Fay. Where would the driveway come in?
The driveway, if you come up Route 55, onto Sunrise, and you don't pass where Christopher is now, it's beyond that before you go around the corner.
Before the corner. Okay. Okay. Yeah, I was just curious, because I saw where they cut in. I was just asking Chris.
That's what he said.
Right, that's what he said. Okay. Cool, great.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Anyone else?
My name is Tom Mullins. Live on Roosevelt Drive in Parkway. I have a little concern. Now, the current is a little over 800 square feet, am I correct?
So...
It's a two-family house.
So this is vacant property right now, right?
Right, but to build a structure, she's, the applicant's asking for a reduction from a little over 800 to 600. So I would say the intent of the original zoning was to build a two-family house, am I correct?
No, so this is town center, so the purpose of town center, it's more of a commercial type of...
No, but there's a, there's two residents that are going to be attached, am I correct?
So there's a structure that has two units.
Okay. So one of the two units has to be at least 800 square feet.
That's what the zoning is, correct?
So I believe the purpose was that, to create a two-family resident, am I correct?
So I, I don't want to, I think the purpose was to have at least 800 square feet per unit.
Okay, well, 800 square feet would be the size of what would be a two-family, because a family would need more than 600 square feet. I believe by the applicant's own admission, there is no tent in this to be a two-family residence, but excuse me, excuse me, I believe I have...
Please, let, please reserve...
I believe it was said it's going to be a one-family structure with a caretaker apartment, which means somewhere down the road, this property is going to be turned over. Okay? So the decision made is not for today, but for the future of a piece of property. So realistically, this isn't a two-family, it's a one-family unit with a small apartment for a caretaker. So I don't really think a reduction from 800 to 600 feet is appropriate based upon what the zoning regulations are. My second concern is about relationships and recusing oneself from a project or a decision. Now, you clearly said you have a 35-year relationship.
I actually said 20 to 25.
20 to 25.
So I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, no, no, I'm sorry.
But, can I finish, please?
No, no, so if I may, so the purpose of the public comment is to share any insights or feedback on the application...
I'm only saying this because Stella invited a conversation when she disclosed there's no conflict. So she invited a conversation.
If you have any questions.
She just said, if we have any questions, she invited me.
What's your question?
So I am, I have questions. So please give me the courtesy, because I was invited to speak if I have questions.
Well, so, sir, if I could just, just one second. So you, folks can make comments about all sorts of things. They could make, just if you give me one, one moment, sir. I listened very patiently when you spoke, so someone could...
Actually, you kind of cut me off.
Well, to clarify something and make sure I understood what you were, you were saying.
I don't think you do.
Okay.
Can I finish, please?
Let me just...
How about you let me finish? That's all I'm asking.
So let me just finish what I was going to say, sir.
I'm asking to finish. I was invited by a board member...
Okay.
... to ask questions based upon her opening statement.
And, sir, I am the chair, sir.
And you're preventing me from asking a question.
If you could restrain yourself for one, just one second.
I'm very restrained.
Well, you keep interrupting me, so...
No, no, you started to interrupt me when I was talking. You immediately cut me off when I was going to ask a question... You immediately cut me off when I was going to ask a question to a zoning board member who invited questions.
Okay, so, sir, what I was trying to do was clarify for you the purpose of the public comment.
I know what the public comment is.
So the purpose of the public comment is to share with the board insights about the application. It's, the purpose of the public comment is not to comment on other things, whether that, those other things are related to some member of the board or a member of the public or anyone else, that's not the purpose of public comment. Now, I, I was allowing for a moment for you, because a board member engaged with you, to allow you to, to say something, but I, what, what I'm explaining to you is that that's outside the scope of public comment. So I'll allow you to continue to finish what you were saying, but I just want to be clear that your comment in reference to the size of the unit, that, that's very helpful, thank you for sharing that with us. If you want to finish what you were saying in, in relation to the board member, I'll let you finish, but that's outside the scope of the public comment, please.
I appreciate your definition. In the future, if you don't want a public comment to a board member, then board members should not invite to the entire community a disclosure. We're all invited now to comment on it, so I'm going to. You indicate that you have a-
Yes.
22-year relationship, okay, the, the applicant says you may speak once or twice a year, so here's my, oh, let me finish, please, okay?
I'm listening.
So here's my question. There are two people here that are part of the Republican Committee. So if you're on the Republican Committee and you meet once a year, once a month, then what you just said about not having a conflict of interest, you, you kind of just put out there questionable ethics. So really, when you say you don't have a relationship with the applicant, but you're on the Republican Committee with the applicant and you meet on a regular basis, so therefore you do have a personal connection-
Don't say anything.
Than what you said.
Because we're going to go back.
You know, you, you have to be one of the most rudest people I've ever seen.
I-
I'm speaking, because you gave me-
Excuse me, you asked a question.
You gave me permission to speak, and as I'm speaking, you engage in conversation-
So, sir, your time is over, it's been over, I'm sorry, sir.
No, it's not.
Your time is over, it's been over for two minutes, I've allowed you-
Did you time it?
Yes, I've been timing-
You interrupted me during my three minutes.
Right, and I allowed you to speak for three minutes, so your time is up, sir.
You interrupted me.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not going to leave until I have an answer to my question.
Can I answer a couple? Sure, okay, two points, one, I did not say that I have a relationship with Fay Garito. I said I have known Fay Garito for 20, 25 years. Second of all, you're referring to meeting once a month, obviously you're not aware, and I'm sure, um, did we ever meet before?
Yeah, actually, you came to my house and said that you were ethical, but now I have to see a conflict of interest with both you and you.
Oh, maybe, maybe, okay, I'm sorry, I forgot about you.
Yeah, I do see a conflict of interest here.
But, what I can say is that actually the Republican Committee meets possibly twice a year, not every year. So in terms of seeing each other every month, I'm not sure where you got that information from, but it's not correct. Also, if you would let us continue with this meeting, one of the things that I can point out, and I, I, I will refer both to the chairman, to my co-members, as well as the attorney who's here, this kind of ratio in terms of variances being given has been given before, as I'm going to factor, remember a particular situation. The building was already built on Route 55, where I believe one of the apartments went down to 400 square feet, and I'm sorry, I don't have that immediate information. But this is not something that is so out of the norm of what we're supposed to do. What we're supposed to do is also to relieve any applicant and to make their life not necessarily better, that would be the wrong term, but reasonable. It is not for us to go out there and measure, you know, a photo too. In any case, I hope that answers your questions.
Well, it does, because I, I think a board, when they make decisions-
Yes.
Have to make it on a, in a business decision.
Correct.
Okay, that's what a municipality is, it's a business.
Correct.
And my concern is, as much as you have applied variances in the past-
Yes.
There's also a responsibility of a board to be ethical. And if, and if there's a conflict of interest based upon relationships, it's ethical to recuse yourself, and that's simply my point based upon you announcing a relationship.
No.
So with that being said, I think, I think we've said enough.
I did not say a relationship, go ahead.
I just, I want to ask you a question about your first concern, and just to be very clear, I've never met Fay in my life.
That's okay.
So, you stated that it was, with the 211-foot variance, would be out of character, because it's meant to be a family, a family residence of 800 square feet or more, considering this is one attached unit. And I appreciate the fact that you're looking towards the future, the next owner, what might happen then. What is your concern?
Because it's a modular home, and any modular home can be converted or built, it's custom-built, so this, what's been proposed can be a 800 and whatever living space the applicant wants, okay? So it can be conforming to the current zoning regulations, okay? I understand giving relief, but there's no reason why relief should be given when it's in a, it can meet those standards, because it's a custom modular home. It can be customized any way they want.
No, I appreciate that.
And I think it's very important when you make a zoning board decision, that it's not about today, it's not about saying we're going to grant something emotionally, because it's a town center area, what's important is what it's going to be 10 years from now, and is that going to fit the town center plan? So my concern is, if there are pre-existing relationships that are going to factor into making this decision, and this is my opinion, okay? Then we're not looking on how this is going to be affected in the future.
I understand, and that's, and my concern-
With that, I will conclude, and I thank you very much for a polite question and an exchange. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to make a public comment?
Andrea Morse, 26 Baker Road. I'm born and raised in this town, 69 years. And according to this town center, I don't know when it's ever going to happen, to have sidewalks along, if they're going to do sidewalks, they should do them along 55 so that the hotel can safely walk to the stores and not fall down my daughter's driveway drunk. That has happened, we've had to call 911. But according to this town center, we're supposed to be down by Stuppen Shop and all this fancy stuff, well, I'm 70 years, I haven't seen anything. No proposals, no nothing. Now, on another note, the wreck, the wreck has been that dump swamp, swamp hole for 70 years. We wanted a pool, didn't get the pool, we were going to get, what's his place down there? What's the, the-
Red Wing.
That's it, and the town said, oh, we don't want that, let's let the condoms go over there.
No, that was pulled, they didn't, they-
I know, how crazy is that, but we still have the same dump swamp hole and you get impotagel. But anyway, enough of what's going on with the town and all that other stuff, I'm just letting you know that they say they're going to do things and nothing happens. But anyway, Fay's home, let's get back to that, is total 2,600 square foot. Now, it'd be funny to have a big apartment thing and a nice little residential thing in the back, even though it's kind of commercial. So the home she has presented is so that she can bring her husband home from the nursing home and live next to my daughter and my son-in-law, because we're all getting elderly. And I just would like you to consider that, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, please? Okay, so I would like to close public comment. Do, do I have a-
Oh, just to clarify, it's wonderful to see every, so many people here. One of the things that this board, the planning board, when I was for many, many years on the planning board as well, is we do consider just that, whereas we do take in consideration that every decision that we make, it has to withstand really time. We don't want to do something that it's going to impact this town in a negative way. We don't want to put a burden on those coming to us for relief, really. That is something that we do look at, we consult with our attorney quite often, to make sure that every decision that we make is a sensible within the guidelines. The very fact that this is a zoning board, it means that there is an issue with the zoning to begin with. No one is coming here unless they have an issue with a particular zone clause. So the very essence of this board is not to say, oh, absolutely not, or always. No, it is, we understand everyone coming before us has an issue with zoning. It is our job to both the residents and the town and the particular individual to come up with the best long-term resolution. And that's truly what the zoning board does. It's in the name of the board, zoning board, thank you.
Linda, would you like to say anything? Okay, so, just wanted to share a couple of observations. So in the fall of last year, we considered an area variance for jet management 2561 Route 55. What the applicant was seeking to do at that time was to take what was essentially a commercial building right on 55 and to convert it into three apartments. One was going to be 634 feet, another was going to be 655 feet, and a third was going to be 486 feet, and that was right on 55. We did ask the applicant to share with us proposals to convert two of the apartments into one apartment, and then the board considered that, and even though I didn't vote to approve that, we did grant a variance to allow a 486-square-foot apartment on, on 55 there. So I just note that's significantly smaller than the apartment, the unit that's being considered here. So I, I do feel it would be unfair for us to not grant a variance for 211 square feet when we did grant one for close to 400 square feet last year. I also noted when reviewing the map that none of the, the homes in the area behind 55, so this, this proposed structure is off of 55 on this-
Sunrise.
Sunrise. None of those units are 10, or less than 15 feet from the road, they're all further setback. So I do feel like it would be unusual to have that structure be right on the road, even if that's, that's what, it wouldn't be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. I do also, I, I note that this appears as just a nice home. It's not, we're not proposing, the applicant's not proposing putting a 600 or 586-square-foot structure on the property, which I think would look quite strange, just a very small cape or something like that. This looks like a, a nice home, and it just happens to have what I would think of as like a mother-in-law suite, which, which is quite, quite convenient and helpful as members of the community have aging family members. It's quite standard to have a, a mother-in-law or a daughter-in-law suite where you could have a, a family member. So those are my observations. Anything for me?
Nothing for me right now. I'm actually, one question for Ms. Garito. Is it possible, or have you considered, creating a, a space between the two units that are attached? So that you could walk, connecting them? So is, have you considered, or is it feasible, to connect the two units on the inside? So like, I'm looking at this floor plan here, between the living room of Unit 1 and the dining room of Unit 2.
I, I understand what you're saying. I think, I think in keeping with the neighborhood, I mean, one is facing, if you say south, and the, the smaller unit is facing west. So, I mean, and it provides for privacy for, and if you're going to rent something, they're not going to want to have to, I, I just think, I think it looks nicer aesthetically than having a single door and then a hallway, that's just choose-up living space.
I understand.
That's my opinion, I mean, and these folks are the designers, I'll defer to them.
Understand, that's helpful, I'm just making sure we explored all options.
So I, I would note that, again, late last year, for jet management, the, the applicant, we, we did ask the applicant to submit a quote for what it would cost to combine the two units, and the quote that they submitted was for $14,609.88, and the board at the time felt like that would be an undue hardship on the applicant to ask them to combine those two units at that cost. And I understood the board to allow the applicant to move forward with a 486-square-foot unit because the cost, the $14,609.88 cost of combining the units was more of a hardship than the board was inclined to, to put on the, the applicant. So I understood the testimony this evening to be that to enlarge this unit to be 800 square foot or greater, it would be a significant cost to do so, and the number I heard was some, something in the vicinity of $100,000. So I, 75 to 100,000, so I note that in, in our consideration. So I, I did have a question for counsel.
Sure.
So I, I note that, you know, this comes before the board with a zone of TC, and so one of the components, one of the variants, is a minimum front yard setback of what is scheduled here to be 0 to 15. And I'm, I'm trying to understand, so minimum front yard setback to me suggests that it must be at least that. I would look for maximum to, to try to understand if it, it must be less than a certain number. Would you clarify for us?
Yeah, it's a, a little bit of an unusual provision in the bulk table there, because it does give a range of 0 to 15 feet, and I think maybe when the planning board referred this application, they read that to mean that there was a maximum of 15 feet that the setback could be. But the code doesn't actually say that, it doesn't say a maximum of 15 feet, and it's pretty unusual to have maximum setbacks. Maybe if you go down to West Chester County or the city, you might see that, but in rural places like the town of Beekman, usually you can have the building as far back from the property line as you want, as, as long as it meets the other setback requirements. So I'm not sure if maybe that is some sort of, I don't know if it's a typo that was left over from a different draft of the bulk table when the code was drafted, or what exactly the intent behind that was, but it's not entirely clear whether the 15 feet is supposed to be a maximum.
So does that suggest to me that the applicant may not need a variance for a minimum front yards setback? for a minimum front yards setback?
That's possible, yeah. The building inspector hasn't opined on this application. And usually it is the building inspector's job to opine on these kinds of issues. But generally speaking, any ambiguity in the code is supposed to be resolved in favor of the applicant.
I see. Okay, so should the board grant a variance or should the board reserve consideration of the setback?
So really, I think you have three options. You could vote to grant or deny the variance as presented to you. You could ask the building inspector to review this issue and issue an opinion on it. Or the board has the power, in addition to granting variances, to issue interpretations of the code. So you could do that, too. You could decide as a board that this provision is not meant to be a maximum of 15 feet. That's simply the minimum.
Got it.
Excuse me, can I say something? It's a code of law. So if you really want it strictly adhered to any of that 15 feet or less, it would have to be 15 feet on the side.
Right.
And that's right smack in the middle. It's a possibility I could do.
Right, understood.
Can I just quickly say something? I would rather have it clear tonight rather than anybody listening. I mean, the intent is not to circumvent anything, believe me. I just think, and we've heard from some people here and I'm sure others would speak, that aesthetically, this is probably the best case scenario rather than being on the street. But I'd like it to have it clear so I can move forward. Because I'm trying to get my thoughts on it.
I think the board is interested in just resolving this tonight as well. We prefer not to revisit.
Jessica was already there when I understood. Jessica was the building inspector. Jessica did come to the building, to the lot, didn't she?
I assume so.
I believe she did.
Yeah, I didn't see any formal letter from the building inspector, so I'm not sure.
I think quite frankly, everybody was surprised and including myself that a single family was not going to be able to sell. But it's okay. It's what it is. It is what it is. We make the best of what we have.
Well, just to be clear, I think what is, well, the setback is one issue. But the other issue is the, in town center, the minimum of 800 square foot for a unit. And, you know, again, from my part, I disagreed with the board when we granted a variance for Jet Management because I did feel like a 486-square-foot unit was just too small. It was closer to a studio than an apartment.
Our first house was on board 15 years ago. And I won't mention the parcel. I feel that it's down closer to the home. We granted a variance for a 600-square-foot apartment. They had, I think, three units. And one of them, it just couldn't be sized. So that's another case where a variance was granted. And again, every situation's different. That's right. This is called the zoning board of appeals. And so somebody can appeal a zoning if it's too far.
Thank you very much. Okay. Are you ready to?
Are you ready?
To vote?
Yeah.
I think so.
Do you have anything else to do?
No, I think that this is, I believe this to be a very typical, a very typical situation that we encounter. And like you, I, too, have voted no on other issues when the variance was truly tight a bit. So I, and I do remember, that's what I was trying to remember. Because we did talk about that 400 square feet. We went over, we went over all of the issues to come up with the decision that we had. So I'm good.
And I would just note before the board moves forward that under secret, this is a type 2 action. So you don't have to do anything with respect to secret review.
Okay, great. So would it be best in terms of moving forward and finality to make a determination that the applicant does not need a minimum front yard setback? Or would it be clearer to vote on it and grant a variance?
You know, it's really within the board's discretion. That's the variance that's been referred to by the planning board. So you could vote on it. If you, it turns out at some point down the road that the applicant really didn't need a variance and, you know, you voted to grant it or deny it, then that wouldn't really affect the applicant.
I'm inclined to vote on it.
I think the other option would be if we don't, we should clarify then that that's not because it's consistent with the neighborhood.
Right, right. Yeah.
All good.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to make a motion to grant a minimum front yard setback of, so the applicant is seeking relief of 73 feet. So can I make a motion, can I get a motion to grant that variance? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And also, I'd like to make a motion to grant a minimum livable floor area variance of 211 feet. According to the plan, the square footage of Unit 2 is 589 square feet. So the applicant would need a 211-square-foot variance. So make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Fine.
Aye.
It says 170.
An equivocative.
Okay.
No, because without, the one apartment is 529.
589.
589. And so there's a difference. That's why.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion to close tonight's meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.